Here we go. I'd like to call this meeting the LACODA Board of Education to order today, June sixteenth. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. D, yeah, Ms. Casper.
Here.
Ms. French.
Here.
Mr. Ward.
Here.
Ms. Shaver.
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one and only God, indivisible, with no end and just for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Delivered.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Ward.
Yes.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Ms. D.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. Shaver.
Yes.
We'll move to administrative reports, bond issue and permanent improving levy review.
So, um, I think as we're all aware, the main reason for this special meeting, um, is to kind of the next item under the agenda under board actions item is resolution of necessity of a bond issue. Um, so before we got to the actual action item, I wanted you just to take the time to review everything one more times, address any questions that we need. So, um, couple of documents, you have kind of the, um, I'm going to call it the financial documents from Adam that we just passed out, but before we get to those, um, and, and we've seen all of these documents kind of in our journey each week over master facilities. But, uh, Elabar made some updates that I just want us to look at one more time in case we have questions. The sheet that you have in front of you right here, it talks about option A and option B, it's the one with the lime green. Um, this is the document that has been updated. If you remember, very similar esken nature, option A and option B, but the last time we were together with master facilities, actually the last couple of times we were together, there was a conversation that option B had that seed money in it for athletics and option A didn't. And, uh, the recommendation was for those to both have that mirrored accordingly. So you now see that in option A, just like you see in option B. Um, and the reason for that, I think, just as a reminder, again, um, I don't, don't want to sound like a broken record, but just want to make sure we're all coming from the same place. Is that, um, the seed money is there specifically, it enumerates athletics because that is something that OFCC in the project would not fund. Those are extra lifts, um, locally funded, whereas something like arts, um, are part of that natural curriculum. So they're going to build art spaces, band spaces, things of that nature. So it's not that we, we certainly value the whole child. We just want to make sure that, um, not only we know, but our community knows. The reason you don't see arts identified there is that the OFCC project itself will cover those spaces. The one thing that we do continue to talk about, as you know, is, um, the auditorium spaces where you have fixed seating. And I know one of the things that we talked about is very important for our community is flexible spaces. So continuing to look at maybe an auditorium with more flexible seating or retractable seating in our future rather than stationary seating that we have. Um, so again, those options have been updated so that both reflect that seed money. Really then, uh, when you look at option A and option B, and there's, uh, again, these timelines have been updated, uh, from, uh, uh, from the architect is, is the timeline of when those buildings, uh, would be built and what that would mean as far, um, as construction and again, the ballot pieces. Option A really, and the, the difference in, in option A and option B is how many times you go to the ballot at once, right? Or twice. So in option A, we are going once, meaning we would, uh, hopefully place it on, um, November. Um, and we would have one ask, whereas in option B, we would have two ask. Um, and we had talked about in the committee about kind of the pros and cons of each of those. And I think Tom said it best when he was with us last time. He goes, I know you keep having discussions, but the group tends to come back to the same conclusion in the discussion. We tend to keep landing on A. Um, and the reason for that is because, um, we have, we've talked about, um, kind of the bifurcation of the vote. Um, how you might split the vote if it's only a high school ask versus an elementary ask, um, whether that's good or bad. Um, we also talked about that, um, if for some reason something wasn't successful in, um, November, then you're even closer, your timeline gets even more condensed and the closer you're asking for money, it's no longer November of two thousand twenty-five and November of two thousand twenty-eight. But it could be the spring of two thousand twenty-six, the fall of two thousand twenty-seven. So that timeline just gets more condensed and we didn't want to have voter fatigue. Um, and then lastly, I think also, you know, we do have, uh, uh, people supporting this effort and making sure that they don't get fatigue as well, um, if you had to go back to the ballot multiple times. So that's a kind of summary version of what we, the conversations we've had, which kind of again leads, has led us back at least historically in our weekly meetings to that option A of one ask, uh, would you see there? Uh, option A, uh, just so remembering the timeline, and again, Tom has it kind of done in his way. That's in communication, we kind of have it done in our way, right? But what that would look like for construction to start, uh, for grade six through nine additions to be complete. And the reason we would want that is that would alleviate some of that spreader in our elementary school because fifth grades would move up into those junior highs. And then we could start on those new elementary school completions, um, demolition happening after that. Um, I will say with the limited engagement we've done with our parent groups and, um, LBD, uh, uh, LBD CGs, I'm talking about hip dips right now. Um, with our parents, our president, council and our parent groups, this was a, um, although we love the architects, this was, this really resonated with people because it felt like there was some actual movement and they could see some fruition and they could see, oh, some help is coming, right? Whether that's from the elementary point or new buildings, uh, with the high school. So any questions about those specific documents? I know Adam will kind of review what that means in terms of, uh, levy and roll off and things of that, but any questions about option A or option B?
I don't have a question, just a comment.
Okay.
Just something to keep in our mind that we know is that the legislature now has a bill that says that levies will have to pass by sixty percent. Crazy. So.
Which is what?
If the.
Sixty percent. They're, they're saying that they have a bill that says levies will have to pass by sixty percent instead of a simple majority.
Oh, it used to be like anything.
Yeah.
Fifty-one, fifty-two.
Yeah, fifty percent.
Yeah.
Fifty, fifty points.
Just need one more, yeah, one more yes vote than no vote right now. So keeping that in mind, depending on if that's successful and if that goes into place, that would affect that, yeah.
So.
That's correct.
Yep.
And there was some question today and all the OSBA and OASBO did of whether that is even legally allowed.
Yeah.
Because there is some wording in the constitution that speaks to the majority. So I think should they try to move that forward? It's still questionable whether that's.
Yeah, he said they're looking at, looking at different lens than the constitution. Of course they are.
Yeah. So, and they, right now, only twenty percent of levies have passed by more than sixty percent.
All right. So then that kind of leads us into the conversation about what that kind of necessity of bond looks like. I know Adam had not, what, I'm going to see some, some folks to get some preliminary paperwork. Uh, but again, he's just going to review kind of, just as we've been doing a master facility, he's going to review some, some pieces just so that we can make sure we're squared away for that next, uh, part of the agenda.
Okay, so. Passed out, this is a certificate that we have to provide to the board members. It's basically just stating what the purpose of this is about, which this is about renovating and improving the existing facilities, uh, and constructing facilities. Uh, and this is going to go for roughly about thirty-seven years. So that's something that needs to be provided. That's just one of those checkboxes. Then on the next page, as the yellow bar is going across it, I will add all this stuff into the minutes, of course, as we always do. But it just kind of has the timeline. So today, June sixteenth, we have this certificate of the maturity. Uh, then we also have the resolution of necessity, which I sent that out this morning. That'll, that's also in here. Um, that we'll have to have passed from there. We'll get these over to the county auditor prior to June thirtieth. Then we'll have those back. We would have a resolution to proceed, which would be on June thirtieth. Now, we must have this approved to the board of elections no later than July twenty-seventh. So this gives us plenty of time to not forget something and make sure that we get everything where it needs to be. And then we would have the receipt from the board of elections and that's when you would have your issue number. That's when we would sort of be able to relay that over to the, uh, bond committee. On this page, this is, uh, some of the information that we had provided to auditor Nix. On the first page, you'll kind of see the blue represents our new bond issuer. You'll see where that kind of rolls off in twenty-nine and then the new bond issue would pick up. If you go to the second page, the second page is really kind of showing you what we're talking about. So currently we have two point one two mils on bonds. What we've asked auditor next for is, is based on our reserve amount, which we should have a little over one year's reserve. We're just coming a bit under that after the reappraisal. So we're asking if on the right-hand side of this, if they would take that to two point three five for the upcoming collection year, then the proposed tax mileage would be three point nine nine, that's the same on either side. That would be the net increase would be a one point eight seven with the point nine five on the PI. The PI point nine five is because we need point five to qualify for the OFCC's program. And our current bond issue that we, uh, or not bond issue, I'm sorry, the current PI levy that was passed back in thirteen for two mils is currently collecting, currently collecting one point oh nine. So if we earmarked that over, half of that's currently going to our technology side with the other half going to support our uh, asphalt and roofs. For the most part, there are some little projects that will come in for the security and cameras and stuff as well. But that would really eat up the entirety of what's left for the facility side. So that's why the PI levy request is on there as well, which results in that new total mileage because of the roll-off would look like either a two point five nine or a two point eight two. Now, that doesn't mean that's what it's going to say, that's just how we'll be advertising that. You go to the following page. This is based on our estimated tax value. This is an interest rate of four point eight, thirty-seven years. And the bond size, which ties back to what Dr. Whiteley was reviewing, five hundred six million, three hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and three dollars. Uh, that will show you at the site at the bond mileage of a three point nine nine, which is what we're anticipating it would show. This will give you a breakdown of what that would look like based on appraised values and what that cost would be consistently year over year. If you go to the following page, that's where you'll see the impact of that point nine five for PI. So the two combined is what this ask would look like. If you went to the maximum on the chart, the five hundred thousand dollar home appraised value, looking at somewhere around eight hundred and sixty dollars total on here for both the PI and the bond mileage. But then it does have that roll-off. So this, this is calculating off of essentially about a five mil, when the actual impact to one of our people from today's collection would be somewhere two point eight to two point six.
So the amount you just quoted is the full amount, not with a reduction.
That's correct.
So it would turn out to be about half of what you just said.
Cause we're, we're really, we're juggling two different concepts.
Exactly.
One is the actual collection that we're going to need, and that's also based around a twenty percent increase at the reappraisal. If that increase became higher, it's easier to say that the mileage would come down when the real reality of it is, it's probably going to be pretty comparable because if all things are similar, then your values went up, the mileage went down. So it's still going to be somewhere relevant in this ballpark. But talking about what the ballot's going to show versus what the actual collection will look like, that's where we want to make sure that we're communicating that in a simpler way. Actual impact from, let's call it from two thousand twenty-five collection to two thousand twenty-six collection could look somewhere more like two point six, two point five nine, which is two point eight two or two point five nine, like you're seeing here. Although the ballot issue would look like the full total amount.
Which is what? What's the mileage going to be on the ballot? Three nine nine?
That's where, that's where I've got. Three nine nine plus the point nine five. These are on separate charts because one chart includes interest, the other part does not. I made a poor attempt today to try to merge this together and I thought, let's just keep it simple. I could have saved myself a lot of time not trying to do that to begin with.
That one.
And that, that point nine five also would roll back, just like, just like this will, as our tax base grows, if the tax base went down, it would increase, but if it grows, it'll decrease.
And we're also still accumulating credits with the state providing about a third of credits back on anything we invest, we'll get a third.
That is correct. And if we didn't want to go that route and we didn't want to partner with the state, then we wouldn't have that point five mil requirement. So when you look at the value we're getting for the mileage we would have to approve and everybody using the similar standard of building now versus the way they used to, as we've been told, um, it seems to be a no-brainer to go that direction.
I, I will say, I was pleasantly surprised with the two point five nine collection. I was anticipating this was going to have a big increase to.
Yes.
Then that.
One thing, um, to, to Adam's sheet that, that he had was the yellow, um, you know, one of the reasons so today is just to consider the levy, right, is not putting the levy on the ballot, it's the resolution to consider and to give the option to the community about if they want to proceed with that. Um, and then we would decide to put it on, on June thirtieth. You will note on Adam's, uh, sheet, it says we have until July twenty-seventh. If for some reason we needed, just to pivot slightly, we do have July twenty-first. One of the reasons we backed that up originally was just to give us a really long window of time. So there, in case there were any hiccups or interruptions. Uh, but technically we would have one more opportunity if there was some reason between now and June that we needed to pause or just we had reservations. Um, and we could still have that July twenty-first meeting without any special meetings to take action.
And we believe, we believe we have the firm dollar amount at this time. But all of the other mileage and everything else is just illustrative. It's very, it's good estimates, we believe, but these are estimates. Once, once of that, the resolution to say that we're wanting it, that's when it would have the county auditor read the document so that we can get true actuals.
And that, would that be the ninth, that would be after the thirtieth vote or after?
After this one, after this.
If they had it to the thirtieth, then they would provide that documentation back to us for that thirtieth meeting.
Probably keeps people from window shopping. I'm just saying, hey, we would kind of like.
Ask every year, yeah.
This is at least saying you got to take a step in the direction to say, we seem to be serious at this moment.
Okay, let me get that right. So today's resolution is
To consider.
To consider.
Correct.
To put it before the committee?
No.
The board, I mean, the auditor's office.
This is, this is saying that we're, we are determining it's, it's necessary to run a ballot issue in order to do this amount. So just by, just by having that passed, then we'll send all this information over to the county auditor. That's when they'll take our values, they'll take collection estimates, they'll take all that and they'll put it into the actual mills that we would be looking at the next votes where we would have that actual, here's what it's going to look like on that ballot. Right now, even though we've got good estimates, these are still estimates until they won't let us put something on the ballot. It's coming from the county auditor to the ballot essentially. But they have to do some math on it and things. So this just says, okay, the board's taking action. For now, you to take action on getting us all these documents certified back. So the board can then look at that as a whole to decide if that's a direction that you do want to go for the November ballot issue.
Okay. So on the tax here, that's when we say now go to the, put it in the, in ballot.
On the, the thirtieth vote would say.
This, 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 today is to approve the whole thing that we've been doing and take it forward.
To take it to the county auditor. Today does not.
Put it on.
Put it on the ballot November.
Yeah.
The next vote we would have would be to put it on the ballot November. There's just more information that we have to gather and by getting this piece done, that's what allows, that's what makes them have to produce those other pieces of information for us. I'm sure there's a good reason why they put these steps in place. It seems, it seems like a lot.
So technically, if this, uh, resolution did not pass, means it will not even go to the auditor.
That's correct.
Correct.
That's correct.
It's a two-step process. Any other discussion needed or questions? Because the next one is the action item. The next section is the action item.
I think, again, we've had so many discussions over.
Talked about it.
Meeting.
And you have.
We have, yeah.
Than I have, so.
Exactly. So.
Every Tuesday. From, from now to the line, we give a day, correct?
All right. So we're ready to move to board action items. I'm going to take those separately this, tonight, because it seems a little, a little different than normal. Um, so item five A, we have a resolution of necessity of bond issue and levy of a tax and excess of the ten mil limitation and to submit the question of the same to the electors and requesting state consent approval and special needs designation in connection there with per Ohio Revised Code five seven oh five point two one eight, one three three point oh six. Do I have a motion?
Delivered.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Mr. D.
No.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. Shaver.
Yes.
All right. Now we go to approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six student code of conduct. Do I have a motion for approval?
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, one thing I would like to draw attention to just to our code of conduct, and I mentioned this, um, in, in the weekly conversations that we have, um, this is predicated on legislation. The biggest brunt of our student code of conduct revisions, um, are really about the cell phone policy that we worked with our community and got their input on. And really, we did, we did a nice job on it, we'll applaud it. Um, but this is all predicated on legislation. If the bill passes that says that, that cell phones are banned, we would have to bring this back um, and, and adjust that. The reason we're doing it now instead of waiting is student code of conduct are very important for our buildings. They're important for handbooks, um, just kind of just the processes of, um, our ombudsman and things of that nature. So if that legislation passes, we would come back to the drawing board with this. We would, I guess it would be simplified in some ways because it'd be pretty cut and dry or just not allowable. Um, and then we would work with Betsy, um, on that communication, uh, of why that change has been made. But currently this shows the collaborative effort that we have with our community and with our stakeholders. But I did just want to know that we could approve it or not and have to come back and look at it.
And just to be clear, a year ago, they passed legislation, legislation requesting that we work with our communities to develop a plan. A plan. Firing. And then now there is proposed legislation to tell us what that plan is instead of what they passed a year ago. So just to clarify that, we are following last year's legislation and implementing that as requested.
Um, as far as policies, I just want to definitely draw your attention between the, uh, second read policy, first read policies, because one of them you've seen here twice. Uh, the first.
I can be, I think.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. So let me, no, that's okay.
I got it.
So any further discussion on the student code of conduct?
Yeah, I have a question about that.
Okay.
I, I think that's something in the house. If we, if we pass this, what happens if the house, uh?
We will have to revise.
And it's different.
We'll have to bring it back for another read to, to approve that change.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Ms. Ward.
Yes.
Ms. Shaver.
Yes. Now we have board action item five C, second read of board policies. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, further discussion?
Um, these all pertain around unpaid leave. I know we've had conversations, um, throughout the year and I've provided some, uh, data around some statistics of that as well. But basically it's the same language just in the four policies because there's administrators, there's LSSA, there's LEA, and there's non-reps. Um, and you will actually see the non-rep policy again in the first read, which we'll talk about, but this particular one is about the unpaid leave language. Um, that, um, as we had talked about, we had hoped to have that in collective bargaining unit. We were not successful in that. I think because we were looking at it as in isolation, we didn't have any leverage, um, with that basically during negotiations. So hopefully, um, in the ideal situation, this will be a short-lived policy, meaning that it would come, uh, to the collective bargaining table in November. Um, and we could rescind this policy afterwards. So hopefully this language will eventually live in the collective bargaining unit or some version thereof, if not this exact one.
Any further discussion?
But I just want to make sure that this is a really robust talking point because honestly, I feel like we're being thrown, you, us, the district, under the bus, having to be the people that institute this, um.
I think leaves in their entirety will be a very, uh, probably one of the top three things that people talk about. I, you know, I mean, I, I, I,
we've all talked about how we have mixed emotions about this, um, because it's an all or nothing and it's very, I think sometimes there's gray, um, but I really, I'm disappointed that we are basically being made to be the bad guy, but in the interest of the data that you sent, I do plan on supporting it, but I really want this to be in the forefront of negotiations.
Further.
I, I want to say thank you for gathering all the data and getting it in one source so we can kind of take a look at it. I was shocked by the number of incidents. I mean, thousands of incidents in one single year for unpaid leave. Um, and how many of that was tied to, you know, the fact that they weren't saving their sick, sick days for when it was needed. Um, and it wasn't broadly across so many individuals. It was, and it was a hundred and thirty-seven. Yeah, uh, individuals that were causing this huge. So when you actually look at the number of days per individual on average, it's astounding. You're talking about massive weeks of lost learning for our students. So, um, that was really helpful to put it in context.
And I think the data, um, a couple of things from my own exploration of that data is one, um, and I mentioned this, it's just coding, needs to be cleaner.
Yeah.
Um, two is there are those kind of, I'm going to call them opportunities that present themselves. That's one type of unpaid leave. Um, and then there are people who are just out of sick days and that's, that's really a staff attendance problem as well. So we're really looking at three different things, but in the pool of that data, talking about bringing that data to the negotiation table, I think that's going to be some really, um, important data for us to have and some really good talking points, um, to, to see how things are being utilized and how staff attendance is, uh, maybe a growth area in some ways.
Thank you so much for, it's, it's good that at least we have that going on for you to go do that deep, uh, dive to get all that information out. At least everybody knows that we are serious, you're looking at everything. We don't know how long this has been on. But at least everybody knows now that it is serious. If you violate it, there's going to be an action because somebody's seriously looking at it.
Well, and I think we also.
Thank you for that.
Uh, thank you. Um, I, one of the things we talked about is I'm calibrating with myself, right? And I mean that truly. So, um, you know, if there is something where, where I start to see a pattern that is really great, then you go, hmm, maybe we should consider that or maybe we should bring that to the table to talk about it. The good thing about a policy is that we can revise it or modify, you know, if things get, uh, if necessary. Um, but one of the things, you know, we ran into a, a first one the other day, where we had a new employee who took a job with us, who had already set up a, a situation next year, unbeknownst before he was over on, yes, we're, we're going to allow him to do that, right? The new employee, he had no idea what work calendar he was going to be entering into, um, when that trip was, was, uh, processed a year ago. So I think those things will continue to work through. I'm going to keep really clean data on what I approve so that I can calibrate each time. Because every time you say you will remember, you won't, you need to write it down and we need to calibrate that. Um, but then also HR and I have also talked about outside of the, um, um, kind of those situations that rise up or trips or things of that, um, we need a more proactive way to even alert staff to how many days they have missed. Um, not anything punitive, but just, hey, do you realize you've missed eight days within a school year? Or do you realize you have a pattern of Fridays or Mondays? Like really just proactive collaborative conversations that aren't punitive in nature. Because sometimes people just don't realize the amount of days that they accrue because they're not looking at their reports and they're not looking at the data. And so HR and I are working on a more proactive approach from building administrator and HR to have that collaborative conversation.
So, oh, go ahead. I was just going to say, I appreciated that data too. It was really eye-opening to me to see the amount of, of sick days that were used and being needed. That was, that was huge. What it also said to me was it's unfortunate that there are some staff members who are now going to be penalized for the excessive absences of others. I do feel like we do have some staff members who in a perfect world deserve that opportunity to take that unpaid leave for significant life events um, or trips and are now unable to because others have used it. And that's really unfortunate. And as a teacher, I always disagreed with, uh, punish the whole class for the behavior of one. Um, so it's sad to see that and connect it, but I mean, it is what it is and we have to reel it in in some way. So, you know, I just ask that moving forward, when you are looking at those, you do take into account those special opportunities for our staff members who do not fall into that bucket of using excessive days or whether it be sick or, you know, all of their personal days or whatever it might be. Um, I do ask that you, you take those into account.
And I think that actually might come up, um, naturally from the bargaining unit, um, because we were talking about personal days, not even around us the other day. And somebody started to kind of have like, well, what about attendance rates or even what about evaluation rates? And those kind of started to, I think that some wheels were turning of like, oh, well, maybe there were some other factors rather than just approve or deny, right? Are there some other factors that we can weigh into that? And that actually came up through the association themselves. So I do think when we look at leave in totality, it will be a much more, um, probably successful conversation than looking at them in like siloed entities. Because you can look at that complete package of leave available to you rather than an isolated event.
And again, you and I have had this discussion, like I, I appreciate the intent. I appreciate the data with a hundred and thirty-seven people.
The sentence that I can't get past on this policy is unpaid days shall not be used for vacation and will not be approved for this purpose. Because as you mentioned, that to me is sort of that punishing the whole class for some people's behavior. And I am completely comfortable with the rest of the policy where it has to be approved by you, there's a process. But putting that in that doesn't allow any gray for the person who it's a, you know, once in a lifetime experience. Uh, that's where it's just a little bit too far for me to be comfortable with. And that's what we discussed. So uh, you know that I, I, I appreciate there's an issue, I appreciate we need to do something. I just struggle and can't get past um that one line because I just think it takes away your flexibility, it takes away our flexibility. It gets to um where somebody who is a high performer and a principal wants to make an exception because this person has all the value that they feel. And then this policy takes away any of that flexibility in that particular instance. So that's just where I am. It's what it is, it's fine, I will support it if, you know, at the will of the board and um, but just, you know, we've had that conversation. And that's, it's just that one piece that I struggle with. So, but you not, you, you talk about you having the ability to approve and not approve. Does that make sense? So I guess I'm confused on that that sentence is in there, that does that?
The main thing that our staff are currently using um unpaid leave for, not like um the sick leave, out of sick leave pieces, um, are vacations. Um, and then, you know, we, we individually or as a group, we've had these conversations. Um, technically, a staff member, when I say a staff member, I'm really talking about a teacher, um, an LEA member. They have twelve point two weeks uh opportunities during the year to take um, to take a trip or, you know, and that's not vacation. They don't accrue vacation days, but kind of non-work days. Um, and I also think again, and you, you all talked about this earlier. Just we're so far off kilter right now that I think to tighten it, it doesn't mean this is going to be the now and forever, right? That is the beautiful thing about a policy, rather than a collective bargaining agreement where you're in it for three years. Um, I just think we have some cleanup to do and some recalibration to get that clean. Um, and then if it needs to be less tight, we can explore that. Um, it's just that, you know, particularly, all of our staff are important and we want them here for kids. And whether you're an office manager or a, a teacher or counselor, whatever it may be, um, to serve kids away in the building is really, really difficult. And so I think our, you know, that, that's the spirit of the language is that we want students here to best support students um each and every day as much as possible. I mean, I think that's what we all, when we talk about even collective bargaining and we talk about um staff attendance, everybody always says, man, we want you to be here for kids. And so we just have to kind of keep going back to that language of what is our, what is our true day-to-day, today work and uh vision.
Yeah.
I, I have a question.
That was just a comment, um, I agree. I think we, we, a lot of what we try to look at is through the lens of the education of our children. Um, and when you look at the lost hours of teaching and we say that teachers are the number one determinant of the education outcomes of our children. It's important that the teachers are present and I'm empathetic to the individual isolated incidences that, that may be the exceptions. Um, but looking at the, the thousands of incidents that this is entailing and understanding that we're being forced in this position because the collective bargaining, they aren't taking this up. And so I, I do want to, I, I feel that we should be partners with our teachers and staff in the education of our children. And throwing it over to us to have to manage this system that's out of whack uh and wash their hands of it a little bit, I've, I, I don't like. So I understand that like, we really want to protect the one or two isolated incidences that might be exceptions. Um, but for me, I'm more focused in on getting us back in line with delivering the education to our children. And so I think this is a necessary step and hopefully a collaborative process to talk broader about how we can take those types of things into account. Um, but when you have a hundred and thirty seven people who are taking vacation throughout the year. I reflect on my own mother who was a geometry teacher through her entire career. She retired with like three hundred sick days because even though she could have taken every Friday off the last three years of her career, she didn't want to do that to her students. And so that's who I want to focus in on on this.
That's the unfortunate part that we're so far out of whack, that it is unfortunately going to be the whole class message recessed because two kindergartners ate glue.
Are there any other questions? All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Schaefer.
No. All right, then we have first read of board policies, but I don't think there's an emergency approval of those just.
Um, this one is, you're probably like, wait, I just saw this agenda, I just saw this. Um, the reason is, um, as you know, we uh, we're looking at some work calendars earlier. Um, particularly the non reps, meaning non-licensed. And uh historically, we had only had two hundred and sixty day work calendars for those. Um, there are other options available to us. You just create your work, you just create new work calendars. Um, and so we actually have um a staff member who will not, a non rep who will not be on a two sixty. And so that vacation, our policy treated, because we only had two sixties, it talked about how they did not accrue vacation. Um, and we're not liberty, but based on this, there's new language that basically if you're not a non, if you are, excuse me, if you are a two sixty, what that means in terms of vacation, but if you're not a two sixty, that's what the big red paragraph is. And this is O R C language, state requirement, the minimum. We can always change that going forward, but we use the state minimum of if, if a staff member fell below the two forty with two sixty, what does their vacation approval look like? So that is where that came from because we changed the work calendar and we need a policy to align to that.
Okay. Moving on to superintendent's action items, we have sub teacher pay twenty twenty five and summer work pay. Uh, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, sorry, and then summer work pay, do I have a motion for approval? Don't move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a little bit explanation on that. On a sub teacher pay.
So uh, as part of the consortium, the Butler County Consortium, from which we source our subs. Um, they require you to yearly approve your sub rates. So we are approving the sub rates for the upcoming year of twenty five, twenty six. So these will be the standard rates that we have ourselves. And the reason they like that is kind of to Adam's point, they don't like you to change midstream. They like you to lock in your sub rates for the year so that they can know what to pay people accordingly and budget in plan and set up their systems. So this is next year's sub rates, which are in line and competitive um with our regional sub rates, minus a couple, um, but we could explain those of why there's.
Same as prior year.
Yeah.
Uh, did we vote on this before?
Yes, we did. Last year, we made a change, actually.
We not only voted, but then we did a second vote because then we ultimately changed it because we wanted to be higher in the scale last year.
So any further discussion? Hearing none, Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, disappointment, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employer official for Ohio Revised Code one two one point two two G one A?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. D. Yes. Ms. French.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes. We will not be taking action other than adjournment when we come out of executive session.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to go to the.
Did you have to wear uh uh winter jacket when you got to
in Alaska?
Mm-hmm.
Um yeah, I had different layers depending on but you know what surprised me the most is the boat we it was freezing and part of it was the heat and our room was probably the worst today and I went to the front desk in there or like I talked to our like cabin steward girl and then I went to the front desk and they were like oh it's a cold climate I'm like I'm aware but my cabin shouldn't be busy come on people and then yeah they they then like when I got on it they replaced the thermostat they realized it truly wasn't working I was being perspicacious but so it's cool yeah if you're in the boat it's where I was freezing like I had brought two scars my daughter like every day I had one died at the other like please my daughter finally walked this way Christine goes oh I'm parked out the front like uh no no
I'm blaming she counted
alright we ready Adam?
Yeah.
I'm ready.
Alright do I have a motion to adjourn that's so good do I have second? Second can you discussion? Hearing none Adam please call a roll.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Oh I messed this up okay. Mr. D?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes thank you everyone.
Stop recording.